Time is 6:00 PM, Council City Council now convenes in regular session. Tonight's demolition will be given by Gene Anderson. The pastor continues, sir.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we honor you. We glorify your name. We seek your presence here. We thank you, Father, for the work that you're doing. Thank you for these who have governed over our city. We pray that they would have wisdom, they would have understanding and insight. And we ask you, oh God, to grant peace to our being. And we ask you, oh God, to be glorified in our midst. So, Lord, we thank you, we praise you for this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Geniteum number two, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going for purple if the consent agenda is ready.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Goss. Second, the Councilman Beck, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Motion carries. Geniteum number three, public hearings, unsafe structures, no spooling.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight we have four properties under consideration for demolition. First one, on May 15, 2014, the owner of the property picks up a Gateway LP and Lone Star PCA located at 2414 North US Highway 75, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure. The structure is unsafe, constitutes a fire hazard, and is a danger to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This is how the House looked when we started the demolition process, and they started it. This is where we're at with it right now. They do not completely have it torn down, but hopefully, by the time that we get to it, they'll complete this process. But right now, it is an attractive nuisance. On May 15, 2014, the owner of the property, George Hartline, and Wondely Buckaloo located at 211 West Munson, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure. The structure is unsafe, constitutes a fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This property is an attractive nuisance. The windows are out on it. The foundation is starting to collapse. It is not weather-tight. This is more the foundation problems. On May 15, 2014, the owner of the property, Don Kelly, and First Bankers Mortgage Corp. located at 219 West Munson, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure. The structure is unsafe, constitutes a fire hazard, and is a danger to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This property is an attractive nuisance. Obviously, it's burned, it's on the ground. On May 15, 2014, the owner of the property, Sally F. Holmes, located at 113 West Bond, was given notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish the structure. The structure is unsafe, constitutes a fire hazard, and is dangerous to human life, and its continued use will constitute a hazard to safety, health, and public welfare. This property has a foundation problem, obviously roof problems. The rafter system here has collapsed. It's not weather-tight. Interested persons have failed, neglected, or refused to comply with the initial notice of violation to repair, rehabilitate, or demolish these dangerous structures. In the regular course of business, a record of violations, notices, and evidence of the dangerous and unsafe conditions have been documented and is on file in the building and code enforcement departments. We are asking the City Council to declare these structures as dangerous structures and order their removal within 10 days after notice of council's decision.
It says the public hearings. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of these properties? There being none, the public hearings closed. Discussion with the Council.
The 2414 North US 75, is that any related to be commercial property?
It's residential.
It is residential, but is it? I don't know exactly what that's saying.
It's an A-Form 75. The convenience store there, the Lone Star? Okay, it's behind that. You can't get to it from the store, but it's located behind that store to kind of give you a general idea of where it's at. So, it could be turned into commercial property, but it's residential.
So, they're going to tear it down and have us haul it off? Is that a request? Have you been?
No, they're hauling it off.
Okay.
So, they started tearing it down after we started the demolition process.
Okay.
On the 219 West Munson, the house fire?
Mm-hmm.
How long ago was that fire?
I don't know exactly how long ago that was. I can't find it.
Well, I guess my follow-up to that is, again, did that property have insurance?
I have been told that yes, they did. I will confirm that with the fire marshal.
And so, if so, like we did on the last property, then we would want to put a lien, I would want to put a lien if they got paid. Which is normally, obviously, not what we do on a residential structure. If someone got checked for that demolition, we should get ours. The City should.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the demolition list panned with the exception on 219. It'd also be on the list, but have it to be on the property.
If it's found.
If it's found that you want it that way. If it's found, then we can be able to have the insurance payments paid. So.
Have a motion, Councilman Beck. If there were a Councilman Hanley, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Geniteum three B, public hearing on 1728 West Morton, Ms. Rock.
Mayor, Council, we're here tonight to sit with the board of public hearing, considering ordinance for a zone change from commercial district to local retail district for property of the Weston addition lot seven and east 25 feet of lot eight, block 11, 728 West Morton. Red Rock Realty owner is currently leasing the building to Kathy McDaniel for a thrift store. She would like to be allowed to place an outside display on her items for sale. This cannot be done in a commercial district. In a local retail district classification, outside display of merchandise and seasonal items shall be limited to the following. Number one, shall not be placed located more than 30 feet from the main building. Number two, shall not occupy any of the parking spaces required by this chapter for the primary uses of the property except as a temporary basis only, which is a maximum of 60 days per display and a maximum of two displays per calendar year. Number three, shall not pose a safety or visible hazard or impede public vehicular or pedestrian circulation either on-site or off-site in any way. Number four, shall not extend it to the public right-of-way or onto adjacent property. Number five, all outside display items shall be removed at the end of the business each day except for large seasonal items such as living plants or Christmas trees. All merchandise shall be displayed in a neat orderly manner, and the display areas shall be maintained in clean, litter-free manner. Staff is recommending disapproval of this request.
This is a public hearing, and I know we have a few here to speak. We'll begin to start with Ms. McDaniel. Go forward, please. Name and address, please, for the record.
Ms. McDaniel, 125 Loy Lake Road. I don't understand the reason why we've been. It seems like we've been singled out. We've tried to comply with your banner, prison rules. We don't display a banner, but everybody in town displays banners. We're not allowed to display our stuff outside under certain regulations. I mean, we've always brought it in at night. We always keep it clean. It's never in our parking lot. And I spent the last week driving around town to find out our place looks better than three-fourths of the ones in town, but we're the one that's being singled out. I don't understand why. We've always been willing to comply. We've never displayed a banner. I just don't understand what the problem is with our property when we have pictures to show, some of the other, both commercial and both retail. Both of them have storage that stays out for a month or longer. They don't attempt to take it in. They don't attempt to get in orderly manner of their business. But they're allowed to carry on business day after day, month after month. I just don't understand. I guess I need answers to what we're doing wrong or what we need to do to be treated like all of the other businesses in town.
Thank you. Mr. Hannity, can you speak to, I guess, really the other businesses? And how we enforce codes?
Yeah, we enforce codes somewhat on a reactive nature, but also on a proactive nature, depending on what particular thing we're enforcing. For example, a minimum of property dangers is a more proactive approach to it, but we don't have the labor force to blanket the town and go from door to door and identify, oh, that's a violation, that's a violation. So, in situations like this, sometimes it's more reactive. We've received some phone calls from people who have made complaints, which started this particular enforcement action. As far as, if you're aware of other violations about the city, our goal is to enforce the city ordinances consistently and fairly across the board. So, give us the addresses, and we'll be happy to start enforcing the ordinance in those locations. You're not being singled out. You're not being given special treatment. Everybody is required to follow the same rules and the same requirements that council adopts around the time. And if you feel like something is not being fairly administered or you're not being fairly treated because enforcement isn't being done fairly, I would simply encourage you to contact my office, and if that would be changed, we will start enforcing ordinance across those businesses as they may apply to them. One of the challenges I think you face along the board is there are several different zoning districts, and sometimes what needs allowing, one isn't allowing the other. So, it could look like it'd be unfair, but we imply we enforce everything according to the zoning district they're present in.
That's part of what I don't understand. You know, I have a business here that's commercial. I have a business right next door that's retail. It's okay for them to do all of this stuff, but I can't, and vice versa. Your districts, you need to work on your districts, because all over town, they're all intermingled, but this guy here can do this, but the one across the street can't. They're in the same district. They're just zoned differently.
Well, they're not in the same district. That's the legal requirement. What zoning district are you in dictates the rules you live by. As far as why we're allowed to do that, a community can, it has, and as we're still, I can let the attorney talk about this if she wants to, but, you know, the challenges to zoning have been legion. But the courts have always said a community can zone and can control the development based on the zoning within their city limits.
I understand.
So, we're simply following that. To your point of unfair treatment, this is something that does concern me, because our goal is to be fair and consistent across the board. So, again, if you see, if you have a slight question about something, please notify my office so that we can investigate it properly and enforce it.
Ms. McDaniel, especially since you're the owner of the store, you'll have an opportunity to speak again if someone else says anything that you want. I'm ready to. Thank you. Next, we have Tanya Cariger. Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Tanya Cariger, and I live at 2505 Loy Lake Road in Denison. First, I'd like to tell you that we are a family-run business, and that it is our desire to help those in our community. We currently help veterans, MHMR, homeless, Head Start, and individuals in need. We help them with anything from underwear to beds. Now, Mr. Hannity, you and I had a conversation not very long ago. You said to me that this is a sad thing, but a lot of people don't care about that. I'm here to tell you that a lot of people do. Here's a petition. It's an unofficial petition. There's almost 300 signatures on this petition to tell you that a lot of people in Denison do care about that. They care very much that we help the people in this community. There are a lot of people that need that help. There are a lot of people on fixed incomes that have lost their jobs, that have lost their homes, and they depend on businesses like ours for that help. This is an unofficial. There are people that come from all over. They're not just from Grayson County. So, there are people that have signed this petition that are from McKinney that drive every week just to shop at our store. So, it's not an official petition. It isn't just from Grayson County. Anyway. Denison needs small businesses. You have ads on TV that say, "Keep our tax dollars in Denison." We want to keep them here. We need to keep them here, but yet you're doing everything that you can. People came out of the woodwork to come to our store and tell us, "I've been fighting City Council forever." They do everything they can. Every little infraction, they're there fighting us. Code enforcement's there on behalf of City Council over every little thing, because I've done this, I've done that. Here's a handful of pictures just in the last three or four days of people that have been out for months and months and months, whether they're zoned commercial or retail. And I have read the code. You sent me a three-page letter of the code. Retail, I mean, commercial, you're not allowed any open storage. Yet there's picture after picture of people that have had storage, open storage, open trailers, tires, whatever the case may be. Retail, you're only allowed 5% of your lot to put out. If I can only put out two things to tell people that I'm open, which my lot is not very large, two things to tell the community that I'm open, I can stay open. If I don't put anything out, they don't know we're open. They think our business is closed, and they have nowhere to go. Goodwill, $2 more, you can go to Walmart. Some people don't have that $2 more, or that's $7.99 for a pair of jeans. They depend on .35 T-shirts or $2 pair of jeans to clothe their kids for school, or free school supplies, or whatever it is. It is my passion to help our community. It is the small businesses. We can't afford empty businesses, empty buildings in Denison. We have enough already. The other thing, the person that owns the building, it's her business. I mean, it's her building. It's really, she paid the fee to have it rezoned. I'm going to comply with whatever it is that you do, but she's the one that asked for it. Whether you keep it whatever, but she's the one that wanted it zoned to retail. I'm going to go. I mean, I'm only a temporary tenant, but she's the one that paid for the fee. I'm going to comply with whatever you said. But she's the one that asked for it to be retail. I hate, it passed the zoning already. It was the City Council that denied it. But ultimately, she's the one that asked for it to be. I hate that you don't pass it because of my business and that it's stopping it from her, because I'm going to comply no matter what you come up with. Please don't let me stop her from getting it zoned, what she would like it to get zoned, because you don't want my business and my stuff out. And I'm like my mom. It feels like you've singled us out. Like I said, there's business after business after business that have, and I've complied from day one with the banners. I've complied with everything you've asked me to do. And I've said, "I'm open. Pick up the phone, call me, tell me what I'm doing wrong. I'll comply with anything that you ask me to do." And yet, there's picture after picture, and not one of them, they've been there for years, months, months, years, and they're still continuing to do their business. And that's all.
James Jones. Name and address, please, for the record.
James Jones, 3872 Highway 69 in Denison. First of all, I thought I better quit talking about everyone of y'all behind your backs at the cafe, at the plumbing shop, at the post office. I don't like a lot of things that have gone on. There's always one in a bunch, and I'm that person. My name is Jim Jones. I've been a small businessman here for 25 years. I've made a good living and raised two teenagers who received full scholarships from our high school. We moved here because of the school and the business opportunity. The town was laid back, easygoing, older homes. There was a city that was interested in helping you. I don't want to live in Frisco or Allen. Going into business is a dream. It's something you dream about. If you haven't tried to do it, then you don't understand it. Not many exceed. You lose what money you have. Displaying a product in front of your building is a necessity with used items. They're always changing. They can't advertise this item because it'll be gone this evening when somebody drives by and sees it. Downtown, a little sign on the sidewalk says, "Snow comes," with the arrow. I think of that sign all the time. One of these days, probably tomorrow now, I'm going in to try one of this person's snow cones. She's on a dead area. There's no foot traffic there. She's trying to get by. One of these days, I'm surprised the fleet of enforcement hasn't wrote the poor lady a ticket. I have rental property, and I suggest you let your enforcement work Saturdays and Sundays, because I've learned that's when you do your remodeling. As a landlord of some commercial buildings, this affects me. How can a little business compete with Walmart? They have sidewalk full of stuff set in front of theirs. Now, this is where I'm ignorant, because I don't understand retail, commercial, duplex, I don't know any of that. I just know a little older building with a family trying to make a living, you should help them in any form or fashion. In fact, why not give them $5,000 to help them keep going? You do it to a big company. Help the little people. And please, change that commercial at the movie theater that I go to every Sunday. A big old purple and black abstract, a crazy voice saying, "Come to Denison. Why don't we show our beautiful downtown?" Thank you for me being ugly.
We have Melissa Lysandee.
Lysandee.
Lysandee. Name and address, please.
Melissa Lysandee. I live at 1401 South Chandler Avenue in Denison, Texas. And I am here to support the bargain bin on the request for rezoning from commercial to retail. The bargain bin being open is more important than you'll ever know. We have people that walk in off the streets that own one pair of clothing, and that's what they have on. Now, imagine being that person, and, you know, they're embarrassed. It's bad. He was embarrassed to tell me he needed clothes. I went to him. He cried when I gave him clothes. We are helping the community. We help them with anything, everything possible. And when we put our stuff out, I'm usually the first one there with Tanya and my hostess. It's lined up nice and neat. I pick up all the trash that gets thrown out at night, or it has to be at night, between 5:30 and 9:00 AM. There's bags of food where they came from Sonic, Vichy. I clean all that up, always the sidewalk. I sweep sidewalks, everything. I mean, we try to keep it really nice and neat. And if we can just put a few things out, our customers are in there. We're still there. Because we went for two months, and we might as well just shut the door for them two months, though we couldn't put nothing outside because nobody came in. The first day we got to put stuff back outside, everybody swamped us because they thought we had closed down. And I think, I had a letter in my window by it, because, like, right now, we're helping the kids move back to school. There's families that can't afford that. Clothes are getting more and more expensive. Food's getting more expensive. And these kids that don't have, when they don't have the, you know, my stuff like the other kids, those are the ones getting picked on in school because they don't have that. So, it makes us feel wonderful to be able to give them an almost brand-new, not brand-new, but almost brand-new pair of Nike shoes and, you know, clothing so that they look nice going to school. And they, I mean, guys, we are really passionate about giving back to the community. I just ask that you guys please consider to rezone us, because it's going to hurt the community too. And I really, I like it. I like helping the community, and I believe that's where I was led, and I ended up there, and that's what we do. And, I mean, I want to keep doing it. And I just want to thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. We have Toby Butterbox. Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Toby Butterbox, and I live at 160 Jennifer in Potsboro. This is a family-run business, and my point of view as a person in the community, and a person that has a child with a disability, a person that does not shop at Macy's or Kohl's or one of your more upscale places to shop. It is beneficial to the community. It helps everybody in the community. It helps the, not only the people that own the business, it helps the people that are in town. I've lived in Denison almost my whole life, and I've heard nothing but, "Bring more businesses to Denison. Bring more businesses to Denison." But it seems like I've heard more and more people in Denison businesses that are getting ran out of Denison. And I'm not sure why. I mean, there's a thrift store in Denison that's leaving Denison and going to Clara. But why? Why are you guys running businesses out of Denison instead of keeping them in? And that's kind of why, I guess, I'm not undershaming. Why are we running our businesses out instead of keeping them in? To me, it seems like we should be doing what we can to keep them here, regardless of what it is. If they need to put a sign up, a banner up, make it nice and neat. You know, go around and make sure it meets a code to make it acceptable banner, or make it an acceptable places to put things. If it means taking a step in, you know, make it work. Quit trying to find wrongs with everything and try to make things right. To me, it just seems... To me, it just seems that there's so many people ready to jump and put the finger and make everything a bad thing and get everything out. And it's just try to bring things back to normal. I just, everything else was already covered that I had to talk on. So pretty much that was my only, my only thing is, ever since I was a kid, you just hear bring things to Denison. But honestly, in the last probably six months, I've heard more businesses going out of Denison.
Is there anyone else here? Name and address please, sir.
Don Munson, eleven eleven twenty-seven West Moore. I'm the agent for Red Rock Realty, and I'm Barbara Egman. And as I do with about every site location or business, I'm pretty familiar with your zoning people because the first thing is why show somebody a building that is not zoned correctly? And I can't remember all the details of what we went through on this building and the occupancy permit which was received. And there's certainly some details on the walkthroughs with fire marshal, electrical, and so forth, by making sure everything is working fine, which it was. And you may not realize it, but the, I think there's three lots to the east that are also owned by Ms. Egman. But kind of what we do in relationship to this is we listen to requests from the tenant about what they need. And if anything's not working right, we handle all the mowing on that property front rear into the east. And it's always mowed well. And as far as I know, I can't even remember when this was done. It's been a while. But at any rate, we came to a time here where we had a notice where this junk zoning needed to be changed to permit sidewalk displays of merchandise. And so we talked to the owner. She paid to have the zoning application in. And it is running into some problems here. The one thing I really haven't had any further discussion on this subject, I did finally see the letter from the city manager. I did get the survey of the properties today from the owner, which I did not have. And I think there's been some error in placement of display in that there is not, you know, there aren't rules here. You cannot put anything on the right-of-way. Now, you wouldn't necessarily realize that, that the right-of-way extends to about five feet behind the sidewalk. There's really only five feet or five or seven feet in front of the building where you can display anything. But, you know, I've been in the store. We've dealt with these folks, and everything's worked pretty well. The one thing I did today, kind of out of desperation, is I went back and asked about another building with these same folks that looked for several buildings to meet their need. And I was told that basically you can't do, even during the day, I mean, you cannot do outside display on this other building as well, which happened to be on South Armstrong. Okay, I'm wondering about that. But I guess what I'm hearing is that this type of minimal outside display will not be permitted anywhere in city under current ordinance. And I think if you look around a little bit, it may be that you're going to have to look at this ordinance because, for example, in Sherman, and I'm not suggesting you go shop in Sherman. I don't know where these folks are going to go. They can't get proper approvals in Denison. But as you all go to Lowe's quite a bit, for example, you know they now have portable buildings in the parking lot. They have trailers in the parking lot. You look at the farm store over there, what you call, anyway, that tractor supply has got fencing materials, lawn mowers. And actually, over in Sherman, what you have to do, you have to get a specific use term. Because one of the things that's happening is that when you take parking spaces for displays, parking space ratio that started out at five percent is impacted. But at any rate, there's no question about it in this world, if we're in this world, you've got outside displays. It's here. I'm hearing it's grandfathered in Walmart and it's X number of other places. It's a pretty neat operation here. As I was looking and measuring on that sidewalk today, yes, they're out too far. And yet they do have some display area that is on private property, across from a building five feet. That might work. But what we're doing from day one is we follow the process. We come to the city zoning department. We go through the code officials. We do not want somebody to lease a building that doesn't meet the checklist of proper approvals. Here we are. I don't know how long we've been in this building. Things get a little, doing so many things, you can't keep track of all that. It's been quite a while. They do all their part. As far as I'm concerned, we do our mowing. Now, we're at a point where it's probably a question of whether this business continues. And I'm not sure that from what I'm hearing that sidewalk display is permissible anywhere.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody another public area that's closed, especially for council? Or Mr. Hannah, do you have anything to add?
I just think even if council would approve the sign, change, it still wouldn't allow them to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish here. I could go into suggestions on how they might be able to get people into their business. They can look at approving their signage. They can have an open sign. There's a number of things that could be done from that standpoint that would be within our ordinances and our codes. If council wanted to maintain this use and this use, they would have to, we would have to rezone. We would have to rewrite the zoning ordinance to allow businesses to put their merchandise kind of outside the building and use that as self-forth space, which I think would be unique in the state of Texas.
So as it stands currently, the, this picture that are shown here would be on the right-of-way. It'd be outside of their property line according to Mr. Munson. Has that been established by the city where the boundary line was?
I haven't even examined what the right-of-way lines are. I'm simply reading the ordinance, and it's written.
I understand that situation.
Mr. Munson said five foot from the building.
We only need a couple of items out. So if it were zoned retail, a couple of items are all of our customers said. If there's a couple of items out, they know we're open. We have open signs in the window.
Go ahead. I understand, I understand what you're saying there, but when I look at this building, I see great windows.
And we have this way.
Great window frontage that a lot of retail business would kill for. I see a sign that I'm assuming says open. So for your customer to tell you, I mean, I just, well, why are they telling you that? That if you place something outside, we know you're open? I mean, most businesses, as we've pointed out, aren't able to put stuff outside.
Our sales, our sales prove it. I mean, for the two months we couldn't put stuff out, we had, our sales were nothing. And we had window displays. We put bright pink neon signs in the windows. We had the open signs. We have our hours posted. We had everything up there that we could put up there. It's just the same thing they say. If we could put the line up there that we put, they see the new stuff that comes in there. They say it grabs their attention. They stop. And it's like they say, even five foot. You know, five foot out is a lot of room for right there in front, end tables, the things that you can put up there. It's not a stack of tires. It's not motorcycles on the sidewalk. It's not, I mean...
Well, I think we did have a bus and a vehicle over there.
We did. They were our personal vehicles. And when Mr. Hannah called me and told me, "You can't do that," we took them out. They were our personal vehicles that we were selling.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes, sir.
Changing the ordinance to the local retail, what does that do for them?
Changes the zoning.
Yeah, what's the deal as far as the running of business?
It allows outside display of merchandise and seasonal items. But it locks it down to a time, and there are other conditions out there that frankly, I don't think they meet. The biggest of which is you can't be a distraction to traffic, to vehicular the public. Can't block sidewalks. You know, there's a list of things they can't do, and I don't think they meet their requirement.
Ever since Mr. Hannah told us, we've kept everything to our side of the sidewalk.
Agreed that they have.
We have not put anything on the sidewalk or to block the sidewalk in any way, shape, or form.
I think council needs to decide whether this is something they want to allow or not. And it's simple as that. If we allow people to put their wares and their merchandise outside the building, then you can expect every store in Denison will want to start putting their merchandise outside regardless of the zoning district. Obviously, car dealerships and motorcycle sales are allowed to display their vehicles and their motorcycles because that's their business.
On the sidewalk?
It's zoned properly, and that's where they're doing their thing, yes. And it's not a public sidewalk that I think that there's only on, that they're displaying their merchandise on. If that's wrong, I'd be happy to enforce your ordinances consistently.
Could I show you pictures? Open storage, pallets of things, milk cartons, Nanas added, more than five percent of their buildings. I can go on and on and on. They all do it. Why is it that I cannot put nice and neat?
Again, it's like those properties, I'm encouraging you to look at the pictures with Mr. Hannah.
Yes, we have.
We'll enforce.
I don't want anybody else to get in trouble. I just won't be allowed the same privileges. I don't want them in trouble. I don't want their businesses to suffer either. I just want to be allowed the same privileges that they have. I don't want the tire shop to go out because they have to store their used tires until somebody comes to pick them up. That's part of business. They're a small business. We're not Walmart. We can't put them out in a trailer until somebody comes to get them. We don't have those resources. We're small businesses. That's what we're here for. We have to store them someplace. And...
I have a question for Mr. Hannah. Is it true that Walmart is grandfathered?
I don't believe their grandfather. Have you seen anything about that?
I don't. They do. They had their stuff out before the ordinance was adopted.
Maybe they are grandfathered.
It's not in the ordinance, the previous ordinance. So I guess that would be a...
We can explore all those things.
I do, I do see a difference, and I think that's part of the issue is that, you know, if you look at Walmart, that's their property, first of all, that they, and they're not on the road with it. You know, and it is seasonal. You know, they put their bikes out for the summer. They put their pools, you know, their kiddie pools out. They have their plants out in the parking lot, you know, for the deals. So, you know, I, you know, it's, this is, it's a difficult, you know, it's a difficult deal partly because of where this building is located, because it is so incredibly close to the road. You know, and we've had, this is not the only business that we've had an issue with in this regard. There was one on Main Street that also had the same issue that, you know, they, they're, what started out as a couple of items grew to be, you know, forty or fifty feet wide of stuff. And it also impeded, you know, walking traffic on Main Street. So it's, it is a very fine line. It is very difficult.
Well, and I think to Mr. Hannah's point, is this something that the community wants to allow? And you've got to picture that in such a way that every retail business or commercial business is allowed to do that. What is that like? If every business had their products out front? Because you can't, to your point, you can't single out somebody. You can't single them out for the, in favor of it. You can't single them out on the negative side of it. It's, if they all, if they all displayed product out front three hundred and sixty-five days a year, is that what you want as a community? And, you know, so again, it's not, it's not...
Do you have anybody here opposing it?
Obviously, Donna, first.
I do. I would like to add something.
Please.
We ran that business for a solid year before we had any complaints at all. We have not stopped traffic with our displays outside. We did not cause any wrecks. We ran without any, any problems until there was a change in city council. But we, we caused no problems, and we ran with stuff, our wares out on our property for one year. We didn't have any problems. No complaints, no accidents, no nothing.
Well, first of all, the change in council, council has at least for the last nine years made it a priority of trying to revitalize and clean up the community. And so, which, which, you know, as Mr. Hannah pointed out, when properties get brought up, you know, they get brought to the attention of the city staff, from people in the community. Everyone gets followed up on. And it sounds like that's what happened here is there was a complaint. So that would be the reason. You know, again, that's a major thoroughfare throughout our community. And emphasis for code enforcement, correct me if I'm wrong, as far as where they spend the majority of their time, is obviously on major thoroughfares around schools and as reported.
That's correct.
That's what our demolition process is. So by the sheer nature of being on a major thoroughfare, you're going to, you're going to get extra scrutiny because it's well-traveled there. And I think that's what, what happened to Harrods. This has been an ongoing deal for nine years that I can recall. Revitalization and cleaning up Denison has been a priority.
Mr. Hannah, is there any spot zoning going on in that area currently?
I can't, there hasn't been any spot zoning since I've been in the city of Denison. I can't speak to what may or may not have happened in the past. But I don't, I don't believe that, that if you look at the legal definition of spot zoning, I don't believe the city has intentionally done that. I would say that's probably a lie.
And for the future development of Denison, that major thoroughfare, what's classically... And for the future development of Denison, uh, that major thoroughfare, what, what's the classically zoning for that? Would it be both, uh, commercial or...
As you get to a higher density retail area, you might see commercial. And, and, but I think local retail is, uh, you know, the reason why they're both present is because depending on the use, I think it's a, I think it's viable. I, I will say this, one of the things that we're talking about now through amendment to our zoning ordinance is redefining some of our districts. We have too many districts and they get muddled and confused. And I think this is a classic example of that. However, staff is not going to recommend in our proposed zoning ordinance that we will have allowed something like this to take place either. It would be the unique community that would have something like this in its zoning ordinance, where this would be allowed.
The most logical solution here, it's already been mentioned, is simply putting a much larger business open sign out front. Uh, it may not be along the, the plane of the front of the building. It may wants, may want it sticking out similar to what their current advertising sign does. But if that's what I've heard, the main issue is, is the fact that whether the public knows we're open or not. And we do appreciate what you're doing for the public, that is very needed. But I think the easiest solution here is to put an oversized open sign on front of your business. It's lighted and visible to your public. And I realize that costs money to do that. But that's, that allows us to comply with our current zoning. Uh, that way, we're not spot zoning within the city, which is something we make an effort not to do. That's, that's a favoritism issue. I think that's the logical solution.
We have a discussion.
Can I make, uh, just one more comment? Uh, the, the house, uh, the lot right next door to this property is still a zone of single family, but most of the ordinance is commercial, strip.
Empty lot?
It's the three empty lots next to it that we keep moving. But, um, just as insightful business, I don't know what this ordinance is about in terms of, no... I mean, just look next door, what I mentioned about what Lowe's is doing, what Walmart's doing, what they, what, uh, Tractor Supply is doing. You think you're going to get a tractor supply here and not have fencing, fencing in the, in the parking lot?
The biggest issue here is the, how close the front building is to the street. It's not a, when you've got a trailer or fencing or whatever, a tractor supply or whatever, it's 300 yards up, or 300 feet at least off of the main thoroughfare.
I misunderstand where you're headed. My, my understanding is that you're telling me that regardless of, of a retail site location need, we're out that side display, you're not going to have...
Now, I, I think the reality, if, if they're getting a special use permit, and again, I don't want to speculate what's happening, you know, the reasons, that they're making a, they're making a decision on that special use for that, for that particular product and location. The communities are, are choosing via the special use process.
Yeah, and, and there's a, there's a difference in the type of use between a store such as this and stores such as Walmart, or Tractor Supply, or Lowe's, or Home Depot, or, you know, or, or a lawn, or a feed and seed store. It's a different type of use. Those different uses are often categorized, the type of zoning. You would not have a Home Depot or Lowe's in a local retail zoning district. It's not going to be present. You may not have it in commercial. Our commercial district can be misleading in what's allowed in the uses versus the title of the description, which is one of the reasons why I want to shrink and compact some of our uses.
Well, I guess I misunderstand that you're not, um, you, you will permit outside display, much like Walmart and the examples we've mentioned. And I think if you drive through most cities, you're going to see outside displays, just maybe 20% of it. But...
What's Walmart, excuse me for the interruption, what's Walmart currently zoned as?
I don't know.
Commercial.
It's commercial. So, we're talking about, we're talking about two different analyses.
This building is already done commercial. This building is not commercial. And we were instructed to come back with, with retail.
Local retail.
So, there's an awful lot of commercial already zoned on Morton Street. And the reality is he won't ever get used. Strip, um, the power centers are drawing all the users and the chances of, and it's not good. I mean, there's not anything you can really do about it. We've got a lot of strip retail in this town that is not worth much. Just a pass.
John, I, I, I do agree with you there, that redevelopment often is a very challenging thing to do. And, and you need to have ordinances and zoning ordinance that, that encourages redevelopment. However, it needs to be done in the standard retail that the community is willing to accept on some places as well. And so, there's, there's, there's a coming public discussion on that, in the view of the proposed zoning ordinance. Hey, we've got, most of our zoning districts written at least. And for the start, I'll review the people's here, some type of feature, from Denison.
Ian, you have another comment?
One more second, and I promise to leave you off. Mr. Hanna, you led me to believe that the community is what counted. All of you are up here, and you told me to get as many people from the community that that's what counted. You had complaints from the community. I have the support from the community. They signed petitions, they came in here to speak on the behalf, and yet it didn't seem to matter to any of you. They spoke and they said they, they backed us, they wanted it, but it doesn't matter to... So, what did it matter that they came here to speak to you, that they signed the petition, that they, that they backed us up? So, what did it matter that we got the support from the community that backed us up? When nobody's here to oppose us, but yet you're still going to deny it? What does it matter? Is that what we are here to do, is to show the support from the community? Is that not what you told me on the phone to do?
You, you indicated to me that you were getting a petition.
Right.
I said, "That's great." There's a couple mischaracterizations you've made about my comments during this meeting, such as, "This community doesn't care about veterans or..."
No, I didn't say veterans.
Well, that's, that's how I took it. And I'm a veteran, so I think, yeah, we do care about veterans in this town, we do care about an legitimate board, um, it's a caring community. I, I don't believe that I, I said, "People don't care about that," or "This is a hard thing." I think where I was going with that comment was, you may be providing a good service, right? But there are other businesses in this community that provide that service that don't have to put their wares out on the street, such as Salvation Army, such as Goodwill, such as, you know, there are other consignment stores in the community that don't, that don't operate the way you're operating. And there are people in the community that don't think it's attractive to have used goods, new goods, whatever, lining the bou- the boulevards or streets. But that is a value decision that I don't make, that this community makes, the ordinances that are adopted. And they make that value decision by the election of the council members that then represent the community. So, it, it is not a perfect system by any stretch of the imagination, but it's the best system in the town there. And I encourage you in my letter to come, to have your people here, that, that are supportive of your, of your business, to be here, so that you can speak your piece, because that's what this process is about. It's a public hearing, you've been heard at one time. Decisions that council may or might not make are theirs to make alone. You could have a room full of 5,000 people saying they want this building. And council could still say, "We don't think it's the right thing for this community," because that's what they're elected to do.
Can I ask for, uh, would you tell me again, uh, the display rules when you're commercially zoned? Are there any display rights at all as a commercially zoned?
Yeah. I'll be happy to send this letter to you again. Council wants me to read it to them, can, but I have some suggestions, probably that's up to the, uh, outside.
I do. Mr. Hanna, just, is there anything that allows into zone, just as a, from a 50,000-foot level, is there anything that allows into display in a commercial zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. So, outside the front, there's no...
That's correct.
And Walmart is commercially zoned?
They are, but as Ms. Brockett has indicated, they resisted before the adoption of this current ordinance, and therefore, they, they are, they would be grandfathered from that, in that requirement as long as they haven't ceased that use for a period of six months. That's what they have.
Comment. The council's decision here tonight is not, the intent is not to close the business. It's simply, uh, to meet the requirements of the city and our current zoning ordinances. And, uh, I, I, I think we've come up with a viable solution. Put a bigger open sign out front of your building. And, uh, and with that, I'll make a motion that we do not approve the zoning charter.
Second. We have a motion from Council Brody, second from Council Beck, all in favor of saying aye. Uh, code, like sign, code. Agenda item four, A, Railroad Commission of Texas, Civil, Civil Cities from Celebrating Process.
Thank you, Mayor. What we've put before you is a resolution, uh, to oppose the proposed rule issued by the Railroad Commission of Texas on July the 8th, because the rule basically takes cities out of the rate-making process. Uh, just a little bit of history on, on rate-making. Prior to ATMS obtaining, uh, TXU and before TXU, it was Lone Star Gas. When it was Lone Star Gas, Lone Star dealt with over 300 different cities on a case-by-case basis on setting rates. Lone Star started the process of trying to consolidate the, that process, but didn't have to deal with cities individually. TXU continued that consolidation, and now that it's ATMS, ATMS has basically three, um, rate-making jurisdictions, if you will. Mid-Tex, which is what we're in, then there's a West Texas District, and then there's Dallas, standalone district. They also have a pipeline district as well. The reason this is important is because if cities are out of the rate-making process, there's not a single entity looking out for consumers. Rate cases involve setting rates for utility operations and infrastructure. It does not include the cost of gas. Cost of gas is a separate thing. And right now, while gas, and the reason this is so important is because right now, while gas is not very expensive, it doesn't seem like a big deal. But when gas prices go up, this is, this is the base rate charge, and that base rate charge is going to stay the same. So, when gas prices go up, our customers, our citizens, their customers, our citizens, are going to feel the pinch of, of increased rates. And as I said, cities are really the only gatekeeper to fight for our citizens, their customers. Gas companies, at least since the 1970s, have been trying to transfer all the rate-making power to the Railroad Commission, and the Railroad Commission has historically been industry-friendly. Very seldom do they rule in favor of the consumer, consumer. In fact, the latest attempt by the industry was to get a bill passed through the legislature that would in fact, which is very similar to this proposed rule, and it would in fact take cities out of the rate-making process. That bill failed, so instead of doing a bill, a particular energy company is trying to get this proposed rule through, uh, the Railroad Commission's rules established for rate-making. So, um, cities have, for nearly 100 years, at least since 1920, had a regional jurisdiction. That means the city decides first whether or not to approve a, a requested rate increase. Then the Railroad Commission has appellate authority. If the cities, like we did just a few months ago, denied the increase in rate, then the railroad, then the company can appeal to the Railroad Commission. The cost of negotiating and litigating gas utility rate increases is borne by the citizens. It's a surcharge on their bill. But that surcharge does not exceed the amount of money that the utilities typically request. So, what it costs to fight to keep those, to keep gas rates reasonable, to keep the base rate reasonable, is, is not as much as the utilities typically request in rate increase. Cities have formed a coalition, we're part of a coalition, uh, that helps, helps us be able to fund that fight. If Denison had to do it by itself, Denison couldn't fight ATMS energy. But Denison in coalition with the other 156 some odd cities that are in our coalition, have a better chance of being able to make, to spend the money to fight, to make sure rates stay reasonable. The rules that are proposed by the commission, one would limit the information available to cities. Cities through the rate-making process are supposed to be able to look at all of the information that went into the request. What, what is the company looking for? Where are they going to spend this money they're asking for? Part of the rule would be to limit how much information the cities can get. The other part of the rule would deter cities from joining coalitions, because it would make it where if your, if your city is not a member of the coalition that bought the gas utility, then you don't have to pay that surcharge that the fight itself costs. So, it basically creates a pre-rider system where if, you know, for example, Pottsboro, which I think they are a member, so if I'm just using them as an example, if they weren't a member, then their citizens wouldn't have to pay the surcharge for the rate case, but Denison's citizens would. So, it, it would basically make these coalitions that make the fight possible, go away. So, what we proposed is that the council pass this resolution, which it is a resolution. It doesn't give the city of Denison or any of our departments any kind of authority. It just says that we, as the city council, oppose this rule, and then this resolution would be forwarded on to our legislators to let them know that we believe cities should be involved in the rate-making process.
Okay. Questions for council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll vote for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, Council Brody, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, item four P, uh, discussion of the upcoming budget.
Okay, sorry. Oh, a public hearing is...
Yes, correct. And Mayor members of the council, we're here to receive a report, hold discussion, and take a vote on calling the public hearings for an increase in tax revenue. Those, um, truth in taxation rules mandate a governmental unit publish a proposed tax rate, which we've done, and also hold two public hearings on a tax revenue increase, not a tax rate increase, but a tax revenue increase. If the proposed rate that we are proposing exceeds the rollback rate or the effective rate, whichever is lower, the taxing unit's governing body must vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate on a future agenda, a future meeting agenda as an action item. And we have that date as well, and I'll state those here momentarily. There must be a recorded vote. And the date of the public hearings must be stated, and notices must be published. And these public hearings, um, are on the website, they're on the cable channel, and they have been posted in the newspaper. The proposed rate of 2014 is the .653377, the same as it was last year. This exceeds the lower of the rollback rate or the effective rate, therefore requiring this action. The hearings will be held both September 2nd, 2014, and September 8th, 2014. Both meetings here at City Hall and Council Chambers at 6:00 p.m. And the adoption of the tax rate will be September 15th, 2014, 6:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers. And tax revenue generated from, um, ad-alarm taxes is proposed, we anticipate it'll be about $270,000 more than budgeted for 2013.
Discussion for council. Motion. My motion approves the whole hearings. Second. Your motion for Council Hanna, second, Council Valverde, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, item four C, discussion of the 2014 budget. Motion carries, agenda four C, discussion of 2013 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. You have slides in your backup, there or not. But a number of items I want to update you on as we go forward with this budget process. The first being... The first being a discussion on the parks, urban landscape position. As we discussed last council meeting, staff wants to put an RFP out. We have what is essentially the completion of that big package now. It is very detailed, very specific. There are some things that we're still going to tweak a little bit about to make sure that we're, we're looking at apples to apples and not sandbagging anything. But I think, I think we'll get a fair and honest look at what the private sector might be able to do, and then we can make a decision at that point in time. I do not expect to have this back and bids to be opened until we adopt the budget. So again, I would like to go forward with what we have written in the budget, with the understanding that we're not going to position until this decision is made by council. The other item is our healthcare, our medical care program for the city. We received our numbers from TML on Friday, 18% increase. So that's, right now we pay $458, thereabouts. 456, yeah, some change, per employee, per month, that are on our, our medical plan. And so numbers are looked at this, this morning, there's 259 lives, 259 employees that are on our plan. So that increase is like a 500, it would go up to $540, thereabouts, a month. And the dollar increase is, is, I think, more, almost more than what our general fund has in available funds over expenditures, is not per day.
Right. It's another $154,000 on top of what we already had budgeted just for general fund, and another $47,000, $48,000 in water and sewer fund over what we had budgeted.
And so this is, the last, previous two years, we had a 4% increase. So it, you know, this stuff, this is how, this is how it works. So what I'd like council to do, again, because we want to spend, we don't want to rush to a solution, we want to spend a little bit of time making sure we provide the best benefit package we can for the dollars we can afford. I would like council to consider capping the city's contribution at 458 dollars, whatever it is for 2016. It's 456, some change, whatever it may be. And then staff will then put together a medical plan that offers more than one plan, probably a plan that costs more, that's a low deductible, a low deductible PPO, employees can buy into if they want to. A plan that's probably a higher deductible than we have now, because we've got to get our per-monthly contribution back down. And then a plan that would be more, keeping within HSA, a very high deductible plan. Right now, we offer eight different plans, but only four of them are taken advantage of, and four of those three very heavily. This gives us budget certainty going forward. And what I would, what I would argue is that for future budget years, this is our contribution. 458 becomes our contribution for employee medical care. It is something that other communities have done. It's the model the school district, school district has adopted, I believe. If, the stuff I found online, I didn't call Dr. Scott, but the stuff I found online is accurate still. School district contributes about $320,000 for, for benefit care. And I don't think that payment covers 100% of the cost of any of the plans. It does for, I think, almost all of one, but not like four or five of us left. So it's not, it's not a model that is unusual for public service. As communities struggle with trying to have some more certainty with their medical insurance numbers, it's something that people are doing. I think private companies have kind of done the same thing. So that's what we'd like council to do. I'd like authority to put together a health program with that guideline, that our, our costs in 2014 don't increase. At that point in time, we'll be able to come back to council, I think in the September 2nd meeting, if not the one after that, and, and have final numbers for council from a budget standpoint. And then council can decide with any compensation they may or may not be able to get.
It's, to your point, I think that's just, it's not unique to us, as the government went today. Certainly not unique to any business, what's going on right here. In my opinion, it's, it's just, I, I echo your, your comments.
Mr. Henn, I know we went through, we took early, we went through kind of this process a few years ago, it's time Councilman McClure and you and I. And unfortunately, I think this is probably going to be an annual situation until we get some, some sense of where this, where the medical needle's heading. So I do appreciate, I know this is, this is, this is a difficult situation. And I do appreciate that we will hopefully come up with some creative solutions to help our folks, our employees, to, you know, to get good qual, still maintain good quality healthcare at hopefully, you know, a reasonable price. And, but unfortunately, I'm, with you and the mayor, I think this will be an annual, an annual thing until we see some certainty on, on that front.
Other comments?
Mayor, I do have one more item to discuss about the budget. We had some discussions the previous council meetings about funding two additional CDL workers on the utility side of the budget. We identified, I was informed and identified that we have presently five vacancies, five CDL vacancies on the city's payroll that are funded, but, but not filled. And so we went to exploring why that was the case. And through our research, we determined that the fracking industry has really done a number on our ability to recruit, retain CDLs. They're paying up near $15 an hour. Other communities that are in our suburb to the south happen to be paying around that price too, if I read my charts right, David, don't let me, don't let me be a liar here. But where David and his guys have come back is a reevaluation of our current CDL operations and our driver's salary. And in order to get us to a market position where we need to be to be able to fill our five vacancies, we're talking about $67,000 added to payroll numbers you've already seen. So what I'd like to do, since council was generous enough to add those two CDL positions, I'd like to cannibalize those and reinvest that into our, our current salary structure for CDL drivers. Both of those positions are about 37 apiece, and some change, so we're going to cover, we'll cover the 67. In order, since they were utility fund, and actually the majority of this cost is in the general fund, what I would recommend is that we reallocate our, recalibrate our allocation and utility fund support to the general fund with the recognition that our CDL drivers go from fund to fund, depending where they're... If you've got, if we need a CDL driver doing a utility fund operation, we don't not use them because they're general fund. They get used where they're needed. And then what I'd like to do is, once I get a full, a full crew of drivers, reevaluate within a six to nine month timeframe, which will put us back into the fiscal year 2016 budget cycle. And we can then evaluate, do we need additional, two additional employees? Or were the fact that we saw a need for employees because we weren't, or we were unable to fill the five positions because the salaries were competitive? There's a lot that I just talked about. Anybody have any questions on that?
From a vice hourly rate increase, what are we talking here?
Right now, our entry CDL drivers are paid at 1216 an hour. And entry-level CDL drivers, the fracking industry, we get about 15, sometimes even get signing bonuses. And what David and his guys have talked about today is going to, is a 1340?
Operator.
Operator one, 1340, which is a dump truck driver. And if you are a, a higher, a more expensive vehicle that you're driving, for lack of a better term, that takes a little more finesse to drive, and it's got more hydraulics, it's a higher level of operation. That'd be an equipment operator two, and that is 1503 an hour.
1477 is rated 12.
1477. Rated 12, 1477. So we're not, we're not even still up to the $15 an hour. However, with the benefit package that we have, David and his, his superintendent's deal that they'll be able to, I see that now, they'd be able to attract and retain the drivers that need to attract or retain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henn. Time's now 7:19, Councilman, I'm going to executive session, so check the 551. It's good us, attorney's duty to comply under Texas rule of conduct. Let's go. Compelation, possible, discuss personal financial situation received from the businesses. There's a matter of negotiation, so check the 551, about 087. Yeah, we'll, we'll go.